It is coming now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeJockey.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Yonky.
If there's nothing else to claim our attention before the first case, we'll get into our first case. Surprise.
All right, um, so we've got a case which is, um, case twenty-one dash seventeen MA, which is our third map amendment case. The applicant is Kevin Steelman. The applicant is requesting to rezone a little less than forty-five acres of Old Tamara Road um, from rural to RSE. Um, staff has reviewed this request. Being that the specific site is located within the neighborhood medium density uh, designation of the comprehensive plan, staff recommends disapproval of this request. Uh, again, to be consistent with our recommendations of following the comprehensive plan. However, we would like to make a note that the adjacent subdivision, which is east of the subject site, was previously rezoned to RSE. Um, as stated in your staff report back under case number eighteen dash zero zero two MA. Um, however, looking at the surroundings, um, developments in that area, this request, um, again, would not be consistent with those zoning designations or again, nor the rest of the basic of the comprehensive plan.
Okay, that's, that's better. Um, if everyone got that, are there any questions for, uh, the staff on this particular case?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Brennan.
The, uh, in conversations with the applicant is, uh, is the applicant of the subject parcel also the owner or developer or have some relationship to the adjacent parcel, which is on Coon Road?
I believe that there may be access from that adjacent property. I believe this subdivision is Abbott Glen. I believe there may be connectivity between those, um, developments.
But, I mean, is, as far as you can tell, is there some intent to have the subject parcel be a part of the development that appears to be going on on the property that's on Coon Road that's, uh, not developed at this time, that's was rezoned RSE in two thousand and eighteen?
I believe there are two separate developments. It's just that, you know, one, they'll just provide connectivity from one to the other.
Uh huh. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Any additional comments for the staff? Surprised that we have any person signing, um, for this case.
Yeah, I believe we have. The only comment we have is from the applicant.
Okay.
Um, and Mr. Delage will, um, read that.
Thank you, Mr. Delage. Go right ahead.
All right. This is from, uh, Kevin Steelman. It says, I am writing concerning our application for resoning TMS numbers zero three four hundred oh two oh three, oh four and oh five, uh, forty-four point six four acres. We are currently developing the adjacent property on Coon Road, which has RSE zoning. We plan to extend the development into these tracks and request the same zoning classification as it is sufficient to accommodate our planned development for these properties. Uh, we are aware that the other adjacent communities and the comprehensive plan for the area have higher densities, but we believe our request is appropriate, given that it will be accessed through our community currently under development. As such, we request that you recommend approval of our application to County Council. Respectfully, Kevin Steelman.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Delage. Um, were there any other comments regarding, uh, this particular case?
No, sir.
Mr. Gilchrist, I got the comment, if I could.
Mr. Brown, go right ahead.
So I, um, I, I feel like I understand, uh, staff's recommendation and definitely appreciate it and appreciate the fact that they offered kind of, uh, some additional commentary as well. Um, that, that would encourage, you know, additional conversation beyond just a, a look at the text of the comprehensive plan. We talk about it on a regular basis, but you know, we, we've got these four factors that we're supposed to consider in these types of requests, and one of them being harmony with, uh, the general planning program. That would include the comprehensive plan. Um, so, you know, the, the minimum density of the RSE would be about point four or five acres, and that would be before the open space bonuses that, that the applicant might apply for. Um, when I look at the need and the justification, you know, which we're looked to under the ordinance is one of the factors. You've got lots of large wooded parcels in that area, but you also have these less dense neighborhoods. It's very near two large schools, Dutch Fork Middle School and Dutch Fork High School. And so it's within walking distance of those two schools. Um, another factor, just looking at the effect on the subject parcel as well as surrounding properties. Um, the, the estate density that's proposed is pretty equal to, well, it's equal to the sister parcel on Coon Road, which apparently is going to be part of the same development. And it's also equal to the lot, uh, sizes in, um, Stone Gate and, and in Palmerston. As they're actually built, they have, uh, different zoning designations, but the actual built densities are, are very harmonious with the RSE, um, density. And then, um, that third factor being the amount of land in the general area with the same classification. Um, again, that Coon Road tract that it's attached to and it's going to apparently be a part of the same development. It's got the same classification, then a portion of Stone Gate, at least a portion of Stone Gate has the same. So to me, it, it looks right that it, that it would fit in with the, the surrounding neighborhoods as far as that density goes. Um, and you know, as far as general planning program goes, again, it's near a school. It, it promotes walkability. It reduces commutes for, uh, shuttling students back and forth. So, um, and, and if I could note, I, I did have some people trying to reach out to me uh, from the community. I did direct them to submit commentary, one way or the other, to the county. And I did not, uh, entertain any communications advocating for one way or the other, but they did make inquiries about, you know, which parcels were in fact the subject of the, uh, the case, just because of the property being landlocked. There were signs on the, on Coon Road itself, right in front of the parcel that's already being developed. So there was some clarification given there about what was the subject of the case. And then, um, there was a question about the fact that mobile homes, manufactured homes might be placed on the property under that zoning classification. Um, and you know, my reading of the county ordinance shows that they would be permitted under RSE as a special requirement. But I would note that manufactured homes are also, uh, an option on the property as it's currently zoned RU. And, uh, the RU, uh, requirements for manufactured homes are lower than they are under RSE. So I know there's a concern generally in that area about density. It, the same conversations were had when we were dealing with the tract of land that's right on Coon Road. And so I would just say that, you know, there, there's definitely pros and cons there. If, if you're looking to advocate for RSLD, what you're, you're going to get no possibility of manufactured homes, which again, it's not a slight on manufactured homes. It's just a question of, you know, does it feel harmonious with the surrounding area? And that's why I think we're hearing about it from other people. But, uh, with LD, you're going to also have minimum lot sizes being forty percent smaller than they are under the RSE designation, which is what the applicant has requested. So, uh, I apologize for speaking at length, but I, I certainly looked closely at the matter. I'm, I would make a motion that we send this to, uh, County Council with a recommendation of approval.
I second that motion.
Hey, it's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Mr. Price, um, just for the record, Mr. Brown mentioned a couple of times that, um, he had had several inquiries regarding this particular property. So we did not receive anything additional from any, uh, uh, folk in the community?
Um, no, sir, we didn't. Um, no, sir, we didn't.
Okay. All right. Let's move in properly second then that, um, we send this case forward to County Council with recommendation of approval, uh, based upon the, the observations and recommendations from Commissioner Brown. Uh, any, any additional discussion?
If I might, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Grady, right, go right here, please.
Yeah, so, so I, I, I certainly appreciate, uh, Mr. Branham's thoughts there. And certainly the, the additional local context I think is, is helpful, but I, I, I find myself, I think, on the other side of the fence here. Um, I find the, the, the comments from staff fairly convincing that, um, you know, when you set a, a comprehensive plan that says this is medium density residential, that there should be some, some commitment to, uh, following through on that. And, and it's interesting that you, you bring up the, the proximity to schools. That would seemingly be a reason we would want to, to have a, a higher level of density in that, in that area to ensure that, that more students are able to access sort of a neighborhood school, um, context. So I, I would, um, you know, sort of advance those as reasons why I, I would, uh, not be inclined to vote for this, um, this amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Grady. Any additional comments? Okay. If not, um, it's been moved and properly second that we move this case forward with recommendation of, of approval. Um, all in favor signify by roll call vote, Mr. Price.
Okay. Gilchrist?
No.
Carnes?
Heather, you're on mute.
Yeah, I know. I got it. Uh, no. I will vote no.
Yonky?
Aye.
Carlisle?
Carlisle, you're on mute, I think.
Carlisle? Sorry. Dennis?
Aye.
Grady?
No.
Taylor?
Nay.
Branham?
Aye.
Fryerson?
No.
Okay, what, what is that, uh, count, Mr. Price?
Um, that mo- that motion fails sixty, uh, three to six.
Okay. So that motion has failed and the chair will, um, entertain an additional motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I, I would move that we, uh, forward this amendment twenty-one dash zero one seven MA to council with a, uh, recommendation of disapproval for the reasons that staff outlined, uh, in their report.
Your second?
Point of order.
I'm sorry?
I was like, I, I, I want to make a comment before we move forward.
Yes, sir, Mr. Dennis.
Um, you know, we just had a motion on the table. Um, and we only had one person speak out in opposition. Uh, many, uh, followed staff. And I'm just wondering, you know, I agree totally with what Mr. Branham said. That's how I seen it. That's how I looked at it. Um, I mean, you already have a parcel there that is already zoned for that. They're looking to extend out for a, you know, everybody in this county is always talking about development, development, development. We're packing in houses, packing in houses, and now we actually have a chance to have a development that's not packed in. And, uh, I understand we have a plan, master plan, but however, you know, we also have to look forward and look at different items. And I think, uh, you know, this would have been a good thing for that area. Um, but as it sees, it looks like, um, other people don't agree, but I just wanted my, uh, my view to be seen on that so that everybody knows where I stand with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dennis. Absolutely. Any additional comments?
I'll comment, uh, to take you back on Commissioner Dennis. This is Mr. Yonky.
Yes, sir.
Right on Coon Road, that estate's zone previously approved is, obviously is a continuation of that. And it's kind of a break in that density there. So to me, this is kind of a common sense. And for everyone else who voted no, I'd like to hear your comments.
I, I mean, I'll, I'll chime in a little bit. I mean, I, I mean, density is just such an interesting thing. I mean, it's weird to say to a developer, well, you're not making it dense enough. Um, I don't agree with this. I mean, I understand that our road system is being challenged by growth, but we are a growth area and density in the long run saves us all money. Um, that's my belief is that with density, you get a better tax ratio to cost from a tax standpoint. Um, I mean, it is, it is weird to say to a developer, yo, you, you need to make smaller houses or you need to make denser development when they don't want to, but I think that, um, you know, if we're saying that based on, and I agree that this is close to schools and so greater density is actually better. Obviously, the developer could zone it denser and make the lots bigger. It's usually that you can't go the other way. Um, but I do think that the comments that were offered is to the fact that staff's got a good reason for what they're doing is what swayed me on my vote.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. I think it's inappropriate, once the vote has been taken, to then go back and start arguing points back and forward. I move, well, I've not moved, and I would appreciate it if we would move forward because the vote has already been taken. But.
Thank you, Commissioner Fryerson. I, I certainly want to, uh, acknowledge those that may have a different opinion to be able to help to voice that. Uh, certainly, I, I, I would agree with, uh, Commissioner Carron. Uh, I think the, the staff's recommendation is, 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 is certainly, uh, had a, a, a large impact on, on my view of, of voting for this. Uh, I, I agree that, uh, it, it's not, I mean, I don't think any commissioner needs to feel like they're obligated to have to justify their vote. If they feel like that's something that they want to vote, they can do that. But I certainly want to give the platform, the, the, the audience for anyone that wants to, well, weigh in on it to do so. So thank you, Commissioner Fryson, for that. Um, are there any additional comments? And Commissioner Carron, thank you so much for your comments as well.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's a, it's a motion. There hasn't been a second yet.
No.
If, so if you want to wait for the second, you know, it's appropriate that we debate this motion. I don't think, you know, it's eligible for debate. So I'd be happy to wait for a second, but, uh, you know, and then I might add some additional debate.
Sure. No, absolutely. So there's not been a second yet. So if anybody wants to add a second, we certainly can do that and continue to talk.
Mr. Oh, Chair, my comment, it's not that it's inappropriate to hear from commissioners. It's just that the original vote had already been taken. It would just seem to me that it would have been appropriate for the discussion to occur prior to that first vote. That's my point.
Yep. Yes, ma'am. I, I, I hear you loud and clear. The first vote actually failed. And so would, this required us to have to actually go back, uh, and, and reconsider, uh, a vote and allow commissioners to weigh in on it. So certainly understand your, your perspective, but we want to make sure that, uh, everyone has an opportunity to, to, to hear, for us to hear their arguments on the case for sure. Thank you. I'm sorry, Commissioner Taylor?
I'd just like the second, uh, Commissioner Grady's, uh, motion.
Okay. It's been moved and properly second that, um, we send case number twenty-one dash zero one seven, uh, MA forward to council with recommendation of disapproval. Uh, any further discussion?
And just briefly, in opposition to the motion, um, you know, I, I, again, respect everybody's perspective on this. Um, but I'm not, uh, we've asked before in, in meetings past to the staff, you know, what, what are you looking at when you make recommendations? They're looking at the comprehensive plan. And that's, that's one of four factors, one of four. So part of my effort was to just provide a more comprehensive analysis as directed by the, the, the county code. And I'm not looking at it as, um, you know, uh, there, there's a scale of possibilities. This is multiple choice. Maybe I would prefer it to be more dense. I'm looking at it as what is the application in front of me? It's currently zoned rural and the application is for RSE. Uh, does that seem to be appropriate under all four factors? Uh, you know, I, in, in a way, it feels like the planning commission is less relevant if we are looking at the same exact type of analysis that staff engages in. Uh, so that's why I think it's understandable that staff reviews according to comprehensive plan. We look at all four factors, and that's why I wanted to highlight those four factors because it does seem very much appropriate within the context of the immediate vicinity. Um, the, thank you for your time.
Christian Brown, thank you for bringing that point up. Uh, it kind of budge into something that I've often talked about in the planning commission, that is whether or not we should have any recommendation from staff. But that the planning commission makes the decision about, um, what should occur. So I, you know, I, I certainly would love to work with you on maybe taking a look at whether or not, uh, we should even have recommendations so that it gives us an opportunity to have more, um, more robust discussion about, uh, exactly what, what direction we should go in with regard to these cases. Thank you, sir. Okay, it's been moved and proper. Any, any, any other comments? It's been moved and properly second that we send case number twenty-one dash zero one seven MA forward to council with recommendation of disapproval. All in favor, signify by roll call vote, Mr. Price.
All right, um, the recommendation, excuse me, the motion was for disapproval of the request?
Yes.
Gilchrist?
Aye.
Carnes?
Aye.
Yonky?
No.
Carlisle?
Aye.
Dennis?
Nay.
Grady?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Branham?
No.
Fryerson?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes?
Okay, and, uh, again, we are recommending body to County Council. Uh, I, I would certainly encourage, uh, not only the applicant, but, uh, for those commissioners that, that, uh, feel very strongly about this case to, uh, convene with the County Council on June twenty-second at their public hearing and have an opportunity to come in and weigh in on the case at that time. Thank you. Um, next case?
All right, uh, the next item is case twenty-one dash zero eighteen MA. Um, the applicant is requesting to rezone nine, ninety-four acres from rural to RSE, which is residential single family estate. Um, staff recommends disapproval of this particular request. Uh, as we feel it would not be consistent, it is inconsistent with the objectives outlined in the comprehensive plan. Um, the plan recommends manufacturing, warehousing and logistics centers, light and heavy industrial, research and industrial facilities, business parks and other employment uses, um, which are the recommendations of being within the economic development center corridor designation. Excuse me, is the RSE district would not allow for development to be consistent with these objectives? So for that, staff recommends disapproval.
Okay, thank you, Price. Are there any questions for the staff on this?
Do we have any comments on this?
Yes, um, and to be, um, and prior to the meeting, we did not have any, but we ju- we did just receive comments from the applicant regarding this case and Mr. Delay Charles, and he's going to read those into a record.
Thank you, Mr. Price.
All right, this is from, uh, Josh Raven PE on behalf of DR Horton. Uh, we met for a pre-op meeting with county staff on May eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. We received positive feedback at that meeting. Given this is inside the Economic Development Center corridor, we are requesting zoning less than the adjacent RSMD and respectfully ask that PC recommend approval to county, to County Council. Respectfully, Josh Raven.
Okay. Is that all we have to sign up, Price?
That is it. Yes.
Okay. All right, any additional comments for the staff on this particular case?
I have a question. Um,
All right, yes.
It's my recollection that at least somewhere somewhat new, near this property, we've done that large economic area to allow research, I think it was. So I mean, my question is, so the staff is saying this should be more likely to be industrial than residential. But I'm thinking that we actually created a significant area near this that I don't think was part of the comp plan to be that type of use. I hope I'm making sense, and if I'm not, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going back and I'll, and I, and I do ask Mr. Delage or Mr. Crooks to weigh in in this particular area along Hardscrabble and I seventy-seven. I'm not familiar with another rezoning request, um, that came before the planning commission of council, but that may have been something I may have missed. Um, well, the delays are Mr. Crooks.
Yes, I, I think Ms. Carnes, I think the one you may be referring to is the one that was off of Blythewood Road.
Yeah.
That was about two years ago, somewhere around that time. Uh, there's, that's where that new, uh, Economic Development Park is by the county. Um, so that would, that may be the one that you're thinking of.
That's exactly what I'm thinking of, and I was, I was not certain that we had, I mean, my thought is that that decision to make that area has created sort of the economic or is planning for an economic engine for this area that maybe this parcel not becoming part of the economic engine is not, doesn't have the same degree of miss with the comp plan based on what we did just up the road. I mean, to me, two miles is close.
Thank you, Ms. Carnes. Price, is this particular, um, parcel land in any master plan accounts?
Um, no, sir.
Okay, it does not exist. What, what is the closest master plan to this particular, um?
You're referring to the neighborhood master plans that our department is in charge of, Mr. Gilchrist?
Sir.
Uh, the most closest one would be, uh, most likely would be the Crane Creek Master Plan.
Okay.
If not it, then I would, I would probably say, well, I think Trenna Acres and the Newcastle Neighborhood is actually the closest. So.
Trenna Acres, is that right?
Trenna Acres, Newcastle Neighborhoods. Yes, sir. That plan is actually, I think that's probably the closest.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Crook. Uh, any additional?
Yep. Yes, Mr. Chair, um, for those who may not be familiar with that, that is near Columbia Mall. Um, near Shakespeare and somewhere border between Two Notch Road, Shakespeare and Feral Road. Just going to give you an idea of the location.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any additional comments for the staff commissioners?
I have just a question and comment. So this stretch of Hardscrabble Road, while it's along seventy-seven, there, there's not an exit there directly. I'm correct as I look at the map? But yeah, this is still part of an economic corridor?
According to the comprehensive plan, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Commissioner, I got, I got a few things.
Yes, sir.
Sorry about that. Bird just flew up on top of the, uh, but okay, um. Anyway, so going back to that, I was looking at this, uh, quite extensively on Friday through, uh, G, through the GIS and everything like that, and directly to the left of it, as you look at it, you know, we actually have a, um, RSMD, which we already have residential, we have residential below it. Um, and it kind of opens it up, but the one thing that I look, when I was looking at this, I'm, I'm thinking, okay, I know it's in that economic area, but Mr. Yonky hit on something that I thought of when you, uh, do some stuff for economic development. When you're looking at industrial, you're, you're wanting to be right off of a interstate interchange. There's not one there. Um, you would actually have to get off down where seventy-seven, two seventy-seven meet, and then you would actually drive through, um, quite a few development areas of residential to get to that little parcel. Um, or you would have to get off up where Melantanda, uh, Jim, the Lexus and all that is, and then have to come back down, uh, Wilson Boulevard and then hit Hardscrabble and come up. uh, Wilson Boulevard and then hit Hardscrabble and come over and Hardscrabble is not designed at all for industrial. No matter how you look at it, it is a small road. I mean, I know they're redoing some of it, but out there, it just doesn't fit. It, it really, to me, in that little area, I think that should be residential. I think, um, what the it fits kind of how that area has been developed already over near Lake Elizabeth and, um, areas such, I cannot remember the name of that other uh, Jasmine Place, uh, is one of them. Um, I mean, we've already got it right there. I, I think having a residential area in that zone is where we need to be because we don't have an interchange. No company is going to come out there and put anything industrial if they don't have that. I mean, that's just how it is. I mean, unless if we're looking to put an interchange there to help them out, I, I don't, I don't see, uh, disapproval. I would actually recommend approval for this.
I, I do have a question, um, and I guess this is directed at, at staff. Um, do we, do we have some further clarification on what exactly this road improvement will, will entail, what this road will look like, uh, this time next year?
Uh, I think that's, I think that's an inaccuracy in relation to a Hardscrabble section, Mr. or Dr. Grady. I believe those road improvements for Hardscrabble would be from Faro to Kelly Mill, so the other side of Hardscrabble that most people are familiar with those improvements taking place currently.
Okay, sorry.
Back, just make sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that was probably my question too, so thank you, Chris, for, um, sharing that with us. Any additional comments, Commissioner?
Thank you, uh, yeah, I, I went out and drove it yesterday and yes, it's just kind of a quiet, very rural feeling stretch of Hardscrabble through there, um, and the interstate is close and you've got the tract that's zoned M one, which, hey, you know, doesn't shock me, it's right on the interstate. Um, there's just nothing being done with it right now. It just, it all just looks like farmland. It looks like lower Richland County almost, um, driving around there. Uh, there's, there is a residential component to the economic corridor. Um, it kind of specifies medium and high density residential uses, uh, which I could see. I mean, obviously you need some residential support to economic, uh, centers, employment centers, so you know, it's, it would, RSE would be more dense than, uh, rural, which it is right now, um. And it would, it would arguably fit in with, with what's there. I mean, as I recall, that other side of the street is Hardscrabble is just pretty fully developed, just with houses spread out on large lots. So, yeah, I definitely wondered if, uh, you know, an RSE neighborhood could meet that definition of the residential component described in the economic corridor designation and just again, kind of acknowledgement of the fact that painted with broad strokes whenever you look at those types of designations over large swaths of land.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Any additional comments from, um, from the commissioners? If not, the chair will entertain a motion on the case, uh, sending case twenty-one dash zero eight, one eight, uh, forward to council with the recommendation. Any more?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to send case twenty-one dash zero one eight MA to county council for approval.
Okay, and, uh, since that's going against the staff recommendation, can you give us an explanation as to why?
Exactly. Alright, uh, as I stated before, because of the surrounding area already has residential around there, there's no way that there's a direct interstate access right there with it leaning on already residential areas. I think it is worth the fit to have it as a residential area, RSE. That is the way I see it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dennis. Is there a second for Mr. Dennis's most, most?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in properly second that, uh, we send case number twenty-one dash zero one eight MA forward to council with the recommendation of approval based upon, um, Mr. Dennis's, um, recommendation. Additional questions? Comments?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, it's great.
Yeah, uh, it's been a weird meeting, um. I, I, I find myself again at, at odds with the, the, the motion that's been advanced here. Um, it, it strikes me as extremely odd to argue that, that an RSE designation is, is this strikes me as even less compatible, um, with the comprehensive plan than the previous, uh, case that we just voted on. Uh, you, you have a site that, that is bordered on two sides. Sorry?
Go right here.
Of order. Um, we've had a, um, we've had.
Mr. Mr. Grady, I mean, Mr. Dennis, can we allow Mr. Grady to finish his point then we'll certainly come back to you. Is that okay?
Yes, I just think we, you know, we had something, we asked, we made a motion. Um, I would just like to go ahead and just move on with it, um, but.
But we have the ability to have a conversation, Mr. Dennis, uh, so Mr. Grady is right to, to comment before we vote on the motion. I'm sorry, Commissioner Grady, you can proceed, please.
That's, that's, that's alright, thank you. Thank you, Chip, Mr. Chair. Um, so we, we have a site that is bordered on, on two sides uh, by this, this industrial zoning, uh, to the north and to the east. Um, you know, when, when I think about the, the economic development center corridor designation, uh, that strikes me as something that is supposed to have, you know, office park elements, supposed to be have, have sort of amenities that serve a a corporate and industrial, um, you know, land use and, 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 uh, you know, customer base essentially. And it, it strikes me that it would be very hard to reconcile that sort of vision as articulated with a, um, you know, with an RSD designation with a, with a, a very low density residential, um, infrastructure. Um, I'm also concerned about, about building housing this close to an interstate. I'm not sure the exact mi- uh, minimum distance between the edge of the parcel and, and the highway, but I, that's, it's substantial, uh. There, there's certainly a risk of, of, you know, having, uh, undesirable land uses in, in close proximity to one another. Um, and so overall, I think, uh, again, I believe that staff made the, made the right judgment call here, so I would, uh, be opposed to the motion as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Grady. Mr. Dennis?
May I comment?
Sure, Commissioner Yonkey, but I wanted to go back to Dennis before to see if he had any additional comments.
Go ahead.
No, I didn't have any additional comments. I just thought we had a, uh, you know, you had asked uh, for any other comments. Nobody made anything, so I waited, I made my, uh, motion, gave my piece and then it was properly second. I was just ready to get on with it because I thought the, uh, I thought we missed that timeframe, but guess not.
Not, not yet. It's young.
Alright, so east of seventy-seven, we have Briar Cliff subdivision, which seems to be about equal distance to this other, uh, property here that's on the west side. We've used that term, this broad paintbrush in planning in the past. If you look at the future development map, that's a whole swath of pink, but this is an area that does not have a highway exit. This area is different. I'm very familiar with this area. And just to comment off of Ms. Fryerson earlier, we did have a proper second. So I love discussion. I feel like we should have that. But is a discussion happening before the motions or after? I'm done.
The, the, the discussions actually can take place after both the motion and the second. Before you take the vote on the, um.
Yeah, seems like if I could, Mr. Chair.
And then, Brent.
Some, sometimes it's before, sometimes it's after. Um, it, it doesn't bother me as long as we all understand, you know, that that's how it might, might go. Um, I know I've asked about that before myself, um. But yeah, I think, you know, to the discussion at hand in this case, it, you, you have the M one zone parcel right now next to seventy-seven in between the interstate and this parcel, uh, potentially it's jarring to, to go from M one to, uh, RSE right next to it. Um, that's, that's the, everybody still there?
Yeah, thank you. We got a, okay, somebody pulled up the map.
Okay, so, so anyway, it's, that, that's the balance we're definitely dealing with, especially when we're trying to drive uh, a potential agenda, uh, to, to the very specific level, you know, of everything within these large tracts of land, uh, driving future development. It, 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 right now, you've got a bunch of basically like country homes in a, in a row on Hardscrabble Road. That one tract, uh, that's currently zoned, I think it's GC out there, that's the small engine repair. You know, it's probably lawnmowers and tractors and stuff like that, so it, it's tricky. I mean, if, if that M one were developed right now, you know, it, 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 it could be a very different look, uh, as we're contemplating RSE right there. Um, as it is right now, it's just, it, it's, 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 um, it's just wooded and it's undeveloped and I think that there's you know, a difference there that's worth noting though, when it comes to a completely undeveloped tract of land like, um, you know, maybe the economic development group, uh, Department of the County looking to put, do like a business park in a specific area, targeted reason, plan in place and all that stuff and otherwise undeveloped versus this little area right here. I mean, this is just like a pinch of a little slice. Um, M one on one side, a neighborhood on the other side, uh, country, southern homes on the other side. Um, so, so yeah, I mean, it's, I don't think there's anything clear cut and it, it, it definitely makes me think hard whenever I think about trying to drive a change, uh, down to a very specific road and, and stretch of road, um, that is going to feel very different from what's there right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. There any comments, additional comments? It's been moved in properly second that, um, we send case number twenty-one dash zero one A M, uh, one eight MA forward to recommendation, to county council's recommendation of based upon Mr. Dennis's, uh, observations, uh, all in favor, signify by roll call vote, Price.
Alright, Gilchrist?
No.
Cars? Yes. Yonkey?
Yes.
Carlisle? Carlisle?
I, I think he said.
No.
Then here we, we didn't hear what you said, Carlisle.
Can he go thumbs up or thumbs down?
Yes, thumbs up. Yeah, he says yes, okay.
So he's forward a motion?
Yes, motion.
Gary Dennis?
Yes.
Brian Grady?
No.
Taylor?
Nay.
Branham?
Aye.
Fryerson?
No.
Uh, the motion
Motion.
I just want to make sure, so I have those four, for the requests, I have Carnes, Yonkey, Carlisle and Br- and Bren.
I also, yes.
Dennis.
And, yeah.
Alright. And Mr. Carlisle voted for, so the motion passes by before.
Okay, and again, we are a recommending body to county council. They will meet again on the twenty-second um, to consider this case at that time. So we certainly would invite the applicant and those that have stood in the case to participate in the meeting at that point. Alright, thank you all for that, uh, discussion. Let me just say for the record that, um, uh, for many years on this planning commission, we have always encouraged the healthy discussion and debate about issues and, and I want to thank this planning commission for, um, that, those healthy discussions because I think that's very important, uh, as we seek to get consensus about what needs to happen in the county. And so, uh, a- a- as the chair, I want to make sure that we have the opportunity to listen to every viewpoint, um, before any vote is taken. Uh, to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to weigh in on what we're trying to do for the best interest of the citizens of the county. So I want to thank you for your, your diligence uh, in respecting, uh, that protocol. Alright.
Alright, uh, it's Mr. Chair, I believe that's.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
If I may, I, I, I just wanted to say something. I think I heard uh, one of the commissioners say something about maybe unlike Ms. Fryerson, who didn't want to hear discussion. And if that is not what the person said, I, I apologize. But my only point is this, and I agree with you, Commissioner, I meant Chairperson Gilchrist, discussion is healthy. My concern is process, protocol and decorum. And I just think that sometimes what we make the mistake of doing is making comments, in my opinion, at the inappropriate time. And, um, I remember some time ago, we, we mentioned that there is some training involved in becoming a commissioner. And I don't think some people have availed themselves of that opportunity yet. I am not against discussion. And I don't want to be characterized by any commissioner as a person against it, but again, process, procedure, decorum, parliamentary procedure, et cetera, are paramount to me and that's all I want to say. Thank you.
No, thank you, Commissioner Fryson for that and, um, thank you for reminding us all of that as, as we continue to do the work for the people of the county, so thank you for that. Alright, Mr. Price, um, number four, Land Development Code rewrite.
Yeah, um, excuse me, Mr. Chair, uh, before we get to that particular part, um, of our agenda, um, and I'll be turning that over to Mr. Crooks and Mr. Delage, um, I do want to point out one thing and I know this just kind of came up and I'm sure we'll be open to have more discussion on this. Give you some questions really regarding staff's recommendation. Um, again, if you, if, if looking at the discussion, if we took off the part that just says staff's recommendation or even just give we would still provide a conclusion based on the comprehensive plan. So if we did say staff recommends approval or disapproval, instead what you would get is consistent and consistent. Which, you know, essentially comes to being the same thing. One of the things staff, again, we just use staff, that staff has reviewed this and we compared it to the comprehensive plan that was reviewed and approved, recommended by the planning commission and ultimately approved by county council, just as a reminder of what was approved previously and as a way to say, look, you're going to go against what was, um, previously reviewed and approved of the comprehensive plan or, you know, you're going to go along with it. And there may be some times where you may want to go against the comprehensive plan and, and those are things that we will look at, look at later on when we go to review the comprehensive plan to determine if some amendments need to be made to that. But again, if we were to take out just overall, the full staff's recommendation, essentially would be almost taking out um, any type of reference to the comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Mr. Price, for, um, sharing that information with us and, um, we certainly will so we will weigh in on that again as we, um, certainly consider aspects of, of the new, uh, Land Development Code. So, thank you.
Yes, right, so I'll turn it over to you for the next line.
Alright, well, number four, Land Development Code rewrite. Exciting.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. So, um, as you'll recall, a couple of weeks ago, we had the work session uh, in regards to the public hearing draft text and we have had since a variety of meetings, um, with various stakeholder groups, um, some single individuals, um, as well. um, some single individuals, um, as well as our public forums, uh, that we had, uh, over the last couple of weeks, and so we've, we've had, uh, various engagement opportunities where we've been discussing this, going over some of those big ideas, uh, similar to the discussion that was had at the work session, and so this is now back before you as a body to take action on. And so, uh, we are asking the planning commission to, uh, make a recommendation for the code rewrite, um, and one thing that we did provide to you all was some additional recommendations from staff based on the feedback that we had received so far, and so that was sent out to you all on Friday, um, and so, you know, we just wanted to request, uh, you know, you all take action on this item, uh, with your recommendation and any discussion that needs to be had, and we are here to address any questions uh, that you all might have as part of that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Crooks, um, before we get into it, let me just say again that, um, I had the opportunity to weigh in on several of the, uh, community meetings, and I want to thank you guys for not only, uh, conducting these meetings, but, um, making sure that the public was well informed about what we're, what we've done over the last few years with the code rewrite, this has been a major undertaking by, uh, this commission and the staff and the consultants, and so we, we, I, I, I want to personally thank you for the work that you've done as a staff uh, to get us to this point, and I'm excited about the fact that, um, before some of us who have been on here for the last four years, working on this, vacate the premises, that we'll get an opportunity to see, um, a, a new land development code, uh, that we all believe, uh, is very consistent with where we are trying to go in the county, so, you know, I just want to make comments on that, I think the document is, 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 is going to be, um, a very useful and user-friendly document uh, for the public, and, uh, I know, uh, county council is excited about our work within that regard, and I'm excited to be able to, um, move this forward to the council so that, uh, we can begin to move forward with the adopting the mapping soon. So, I just want to comment on that, and then thank you for the work. Any comments for the, for the staff, commissioners?
Yeah.
Which is around?
So we got, um, I think by my count, it's, it's, uh, on the recommended changes that came in, uh, late Friday, it's around eighty line items, are, are we, what are we being asked to do as to these eighty recommended changes?
So a lot of those are textual changes, so not necessarily scrivener's errors, there are a couple of those, but these are things that as part of our review of this draft as it's been released, as well as comments and feedback that we have received as part of the engagement process, those are changes that we as staff feel addressed variety of feedback that we have received, and is still meeting the overall objectives of the plan, and so a lot of those that you will notice are in relation to land use permissions, most of those are in relation to the Homestead District, where, uh, from our look, it appears to where his information was just missing or included incorrectly from what it was originally recommended and supposed to be. Um, but a lot of those are going to be changes based on that feedback that we have received so far.
Okay, so, so it's staff's intent to incorporate every one of these into the proposed draft of the L D C?
That would be correct, yes, sir. Um, it's based on planning commission's recommendation.
Yeah, um, uh, ju- just at a glance, definitely seeing, uh, lots of different uses possibly coming into play for different zoning districts towards the end of the list, and through the middle, uh, more density for at least six of the residential zoning districts. I, it, it was a lot for me to digest over the weekend. I, I'd provide, I, I'd prefer to postpone, uh, a vote on this so that, you know, the commission has more time to fully digest these proposed changes, so I can make a motion to postpone and see how the commission feels about it.
Okay, Brad? Mr. De, I think I saw Mr. Dennis's hand raised, is that right?
Yes, sir, um, I'll second that, and the reason why I would second it, you know, we got these in Friday, and I, I mean, for the good, we talk about how we're trying to do good for the community, and I appreciate the staff giving us these recommendations, but the fact is, I did not, I mean, I received them Friday, but I did not check my email Friday, because I didn't know, um, because I'd got our packet on Thursday, and I'd pushed through Thursday, and I pushed through on Friday as I'm driving up to a wedding, or my wife was driving up to a wedding to get everything ready for this meeting, and I, I didn't get, but I would hate to push something through that I didn't get a chance, um, to look at, um, fully for the county, I, I, and I'll be straight up honest with you, that's why I feel like it should be postponed. And I hate to postpone it because I'm ready to get this thing done, but at the same time, there's a lot of things in there, and there's a lot of going back and forth on these pages and references just to double check and make sure that we're hitting.
It certainly was. For sure. Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Y- yeah, yes, sir, um, Price.
Yes, um, kind of as the discussion seems to be leaning toward a, um, deferral of this, um, of this item, I quit, the question is, are we looking at deferring this until the July twelfth planning commission meeting, or are we looking to have a special called meeting, um, you know, between now and the next planning commission meeting, I mean, planning commission meeting?
I mean, for what it, for what it's worth as the movement, I, I don't mind if it's a special called meeting, I, I know we're balancing, you know, haste and expediency, but, but also due diligence.
I, I'm along with Mr. Brannum on that, I mean, twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours, I would be ready, I just need to really go through, double check all these points before I, you know, get, uh.
Well, I, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm open to, um, a call meeting, I don't want to do a call meeting in twenty-four or forty hours, but I think we can certainly, um, look at an option to do that, and, um, so that we can get it to county council, because I, I don't think they meet in August, is that right?
County council does not meet in August, and this is scheduled to go before the planning commission on the twenty-second of June.
You mean the county council?
I mean, county council, I apologize.
Yeah. Okay, well, I, I'm, I'm certainly open to, uh, having a meeting that maybe, um, I guess to give everybody a break this week and go into next week. I guess I should ask staff, what, what, what would be your on that, uh, since we have to get it to them by the twenty-second? Um, could we potentially do? Oh, let's see. Maybe the following Monday? That'll give everybody at least a week to kind of go through the, the document.
Yes, sir, Mr. I think we would recommend the thirteenth, so the, the Monday, the thirteenth. Excuse me, fourteenth.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, okay, yeah, following Monday, fourteenth, okay.
Since the motion was, uh, moved and seconded, does it, can it be amended to include the date?
It, it would have to be.
I'm, I'm happy to amend it, motion to postpone till special called meeting on the fourteenth.
Okay.
Happy to second that amendment.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, um, Price will take roll call vote.
And that will be three P M. also, or are you looking at another time?
Um, I guess we could do, is there okay with the three P M. time, right, same time? Okay.
Uh, yes.
Okay. We'll leave it at three o'clock?
That was just my vote, I'm not, I see some other folks kind of doing a mental scan, I'm just saying I don't have a problem with it. Go.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that also.
I said, it seems to be okay with that, so let's, 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 when, take a roll call vote, Price.
Okay, those, um, in favor of the, of the deferral of this item until the June fourteenth, three P M. special called meeting? Gilchrist?
Aye.
Cars?
Aye.
Yonki?
Aye.
Carlisle?
What are you talking?
Thumbs up, um, Dennis?
Aye.
Grady?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Brannum?
Aye.
Fryerson?
Aye.
All right.
Maran?
Is there any additional information that any of the members of the planning commission would need prior to this meeting?
I'm sorry.
And you don't have to have an answer right now, if you think of something later on, please give staff a call or send us an email.
I, this is, uh, Commissioner Dennis, uh, no, I, I just glad to have this extra time, uh, I really want to get this rewrite done correctly and make sure it's right for the future, uh.
Yeah, and commissioners, as, as you're reading this, if y'all have questions, or if y'all want to get some more clarity on any of the points, just, you know, let us know, uh, shoot us an email and give us a call, either one, um, we can, you know, show you where we're coming from on, on those various changes.
Okay.
I, I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
Um, the, a lot of these changes come from those meetings that we, um, those public meetings from YouTube, correct?
Public meetings, stakeholder meetings, um, so those two are the main ones that they're coming from, yeah.
Okay, uh, so most of my questions, if I have them, should be answered because I got to ten, I think, two of those. Thank you.
All right. Moving right along to item five, Chairman's report, I, I don't really have a report, um, except to just thank you guys for, um, the great work that, that you continue to do, um, each, each month. Um, Mr. Price, we, we know that county council is considering potentially meeting again in person, is that right? Um, and, uh, hopefully that we will potentially follow suit on that based on what the county is going to do, any updates on that?
Uh, I believe that the council is scheduled to meet on the thirteenth of July, um, you know, it'll be their first in-person meeting, so, um, no, no one else is scheduled to meet, uh, before county council does. So I, I would say unless you have some type of special called meeting prior to the September planning commission meeting, um, July would be your last Zoom meeting, and your next meeting after that would be in person in September.
Okay. Uh, that's all I have, uh, for children, we're moving on to item six, uh, items for discussion. Anything that anybody needs to bring to the planning commission's attention?
I did want to also mention, uh, I just wanted to wait to the end and circle back around, Ms. Fryerson brought up the era, I was also present at the meeting, and it was noted that I was absent.
Okay, Commissioner Taylor, well, um.
That was February and March.
Yeah, this, this is happening pretty frequently, so we probably need to really check, uh, the record to ensure that, um, all commissioners who have been present to, uh, make sure that that's reflected in the records, extremely.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, again, our apologies, and we will definitely look into this, um, and hopefully get all of this straight so we don't have this issue occur again.
Thank you, Mr. Price, thank you, Commissioner Taylor, um, planning director's report.
Uh, that is in your packet at this time, uh, regarding the reporter council, uh, from your last zoning public hearing meeting.
Okay, it's my understanding, Price, that, um, our planning director has, um, seen moved on to greener pastures, is that right?
Uh, yes, sir, um, yes, uh, Maran, does, our C P and B director, um, has, um, accepted another position elsewhere, um, so, um, Mr. Monier is, um, no longer with Richland County.
Well, thank you for sharing that with us, um, we, you know, certainly applaud his work, you know, while he was here, um, brought a great deal of expertise to the county, and, uh, we, we certainly appreciate, um, you know, his, his work, and hopefully he learned a lot from Richland County to take to wherever he's going to be going, so, um, our hats off to him. All right, um, thank you for the report in, in the, in the packet, and, uh, if there's nothing else to claim our attention, the chair will entertain motion to adjourn.
Listen, Chair, I, uh, one of the things that we've been talking about for years, and so I think, uh, as I say that, I believe only Commissioner Cars may have been around during this time, but we were looking to update, um, our planning commission's rules or procedure. Um, and again, I guess this is something we probably need to bring forward to you, I don't know if we'll have everything in place by July, but we may give it an attempt to it, at least give a couple of, um, you know, give you the, the, a copy of it, you know, also with some, some of staff's recommendations, um, if y'all don't mind, uh, regarding the rules, um, because I think some of them may be a little bit outdated at this time, and a few things to look at, but, um, just as I've been looking at the rules or procedure, um, based on the discussion that was had today, um, according to section ten under procedures, E and F, um, that's upon completion of any discussion on any item, and that's, um, you know, from the public or the applicant. The chair measures are close the public discussion and open the discussion among the commission members. And F, when the commission discussion has concluded, the chair or a commission member may call the question and the vote shall be taken in public, so that's what's currently in your rules of procedure.
Okay, yeah, please resend that to all of us, I know when we had our last retreat, um, that was one of the things that we discussed, uh, going through our rules, just to make sure that they're applicable um, now, and we had had some conversations about that, but, um, obviously, since the pandemic, we have not been able to have our annual retreat as we've had in the past. So, thank you for sharing that, and, uh, i- if you will, particularly for a lot of the newer commissioners, please send that around, just so that we can have it.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Fryerson, there's one thing that we brought up in the past, and it had not been resolved, and that was the issue of email addresses for commissioners, and we want it to, there to be consistency. Have we come to a conclusion yet, or can we bring that up maybe at the next meeting, or whatever you think is appropriate?
Uh, I, I think that was, uh, we, we talked about the possibility of commissioners actually having, uh, I believe, uh, county email addresses or something like that, just so that, um, we could, the, the, the county would have a way of communicating, I mean, I know we've talked about that in the past, and I don't know where, where, where any of that landed, I think the last conversation I remember with some of that was, uh, it was going to be referred to the administrator to have a conversation about it, and obviously we've changed administrators, so I don't know, Mr. Price, if we've had a discussion about that any further or not.
Uh, no, sir, not with the, um, with our current administrator, I'm sure that's a discussion that we can have, and we can be prepared to discuss that, um,
Okay.
at the July meeting.
Thank you. Bring it in. I'm sorry. Was that Taylor?
No, sir, that was, uh, Ms. Fryerson saying thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Fryerson, okay, thank you, Ms. Fryerson, yes, for bringing it, uh, to the commission, anything else, guys? All right, not, Chair will entertain motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
All right, that's it.
Seconded.
All right, um, all in favor of adjournment, signified by roll call vote, Mr. Price.
All right, Gilchrist?
Aye.
Cars? Yonki?
Aye.
Carlisle? Dennis?
Aye.
Grady?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Brannum?
Aye.
Fryerson?
Aye.
All right, and, uh, homage to happy days, uh, we have, the motion for adjournment is approved.
Mr. Price, before we just got here, uh, just, um, please remind us all about the meeting for next Monday, too, just so that we have it on the calendar.
Yes, sir, you're, you know, actually, we're going to go ahead and send that out, um, shortly, I'll send out the meeting request. Yes, sir, you're, you know, actually, we're going to go ahead and send that out, um, shortly, I'll send out the meeting request. And just to make sure everybody is, um, everybody remembers, I'll do something I haven't done in a while, and I will send you a text message. Reminding you about the meeting also.
Bless you, that works good. All right, guys, have a good week, everybody.
Thank you, you too.
All right.
Thank you, you guys have a good week.
Thanks.